All right, it is 6:00 PM. I'd like to convene open session and...
I smell diesel.
And then defer to executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A. The Chair declares that having an open session may have detrimental effect upon the town's bargaining, litigating, or negotiating position as applicable. Purpose three, litigation strategy, Idlewild versus Conservation Commission. Purpose six, disposition of real property, first-floor lease at 130 Main Street.
Move to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make an announcement that we're not coming.
It's unanimous. Now, we won't be back until 7:00 o'clock, so that'll leave a lot of time for folks to come to the regular session. I thank you.
Good evening, welcome back to the Sandwich Board of Selectmen meeting for April 27th. We'll open with a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to open with our first public comment period. Just want to remind everybody that we have five minutes time rule set up, so is anybody here for public comment? Yep, right over there. Just make sure that the green light's on and just state your name and who you are.
Brian Anderson.
If you want, yeah.
Sorry. Brian Anderson of Cape Cod Markets. I guess I'd ask the question first of whether you were going to talk about Article 16 on the old business, otherwise I'd like to comment about it. If we are allowed to comment then, then I won't comment now. Or should I just comment?
I would say we're going to briefly talk about it, but typically during public comment, we don't respond back during public comment.
I guess I'll just read a brief comment.
Sure, that'd be great.
I'm Brian Anderson, I'm a taxpayer of residential and commercial property in town, and also the owner of Cape Cod Markets Incorporated, which is a 1615 all-alcoholic license in town. This evening, I'm here to comment about Article 16. It is my hope, and that of all the package store owners that are here this evening, that the selectmen will take an opportunity tonight under nine old-business annual town meeting to explain to those present and to the voters watching what information, data, requests, et cetera, were considered by the selectmen when proposing Article 16 package store expansion. The article will expand the number of year-round package stores in town from the existing six to a new total of 11 package stores, from six to 11, almost doubling the number of year-round package store licenses in the town of Sandwich. We are not asking about Section 138, Chapter 138, Section 12 licenses commonly referred to as on-premise, a restaurant. They are covered by a totally different section of the law and a totally different quota system in state law. We are only asking what data, what information, what requests, what communication were had by the selectmen in order to make the drastic change from six year-round liquor licenses to 11. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for considering this.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? Going, seeing none. Review and approval of minutes for 41323.
Mr. Chairman, moved to approve of the minutes from 41323. There was a minor change in spelling of a name that we have been, we have resolved, and I'm good with that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
Yeah, same, same, great. And then just for the record, that was a three with two abstentions because of absence. We'll move on to the town manager report.
Just a couple of quick updates in terms of upcoming meetings, and it's listed at the end of the agenda, but the big meeting obviously is next Monday night is the annual town meeting at 7:00 at the high school auditorium. And then next Thursday is the annual town election, and I believe polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And it is the first time we're using two new polling locations. I believe its precincts one through three are at Corpus Christi Parish Center, and precincts four through six are at the Center for Active Living in the, and so it'll be interesting to see how that goes with our two new locations. Our next meeting isn't until two weeks from tonight, which I believe is the 11th. So, a couple of other quick things, I guess far too complex for us to go into yet because we don't quite understand it, but Heather and I, Dave Mason, Ed Leonard, our wastewater consultant, as part of the follow-up on that regional grant we have, we had a joint meeting with probably five officials each from the federal EPA and the state DEP about wastewater and the base efforts, and Converge and ASUS were participating as well. It was a really good turnout in terms of numbers of people participating, and it's fair to say that, you know, the federal government especially is getting more concerned about the so-called PFAS contamination and how that may impact wastewater on the base in the long term. Trying to figure out what it all means. We have follow-up meetings. There are no regulations right now that impact that, so it'll be interesting as we sort of work our way through what that all means. It should not change at all because we've had separate meetings since that. The meeting that I referred to, we'll still be able to submit an application in August for that intended use plan, which is really the next important step. You know, where we need to run collection lines does not matter in terms of where the ultimate treatment and disposal is. So, we'll be still submitting something on that, and as that progresses and we know a little bit more, we'll let you know. Again, it's a very complex issue that's mostly speculation right now, so we'll see how that goes. And then I would just say I wanted to acknowledge Tricia McDonald, who's been our assistant recreation director, I think for almost a dozen years, just an exceptional employee. Got a great opportunity to become the recreation director in Orleans, so we want to congratulate her and thank her for all of her service to us. You know, she and Guy Boucher are an incredible team, and the things that they've done with our rec department over the last, you know, 15 years, it's astounding. So, I just wanted to thank her for her service and everything she's done for us, and we wished her well and said if she ever wants to come back, we'll find a place for her, so, and that's it. Do you have anything else? No, that's it.
Got a question. I had some people ask me recently about wastewater, and I know that we, getting this report in in August is a big step of getting the states, get on the states list. If that all goes through, what do you anticipate as a timeframe?
Yeah, if we, when that goes through, you don't find out if you've made the cut probably until this time next year, and then that just starts you on the process. So, we probably won't be issuing actual debt for three to four years, I would say. And obviously, if you've driven around Barnstable lately, the amount of work that's going on, I mean, it's a long, it's a big process to run the lines and to determine where the pumping stations will be, so Wright Pierce, our engineering firm, and Ed Leonard, who we've been working with for literally decades, there have some better ideas of where all that's going to go and where the pump stations would be, how do we get things from the lower part of town up to 130 and, you know, wherever we, it gets treated, you know, to try to figure that all out. So, it has a ways to go, but it would be nice to issue that deck because that means we're actually, you know, putting pipes in the ground and we're working towards a solution.
Anybody else?
I should say, Converge has made it clear, I don't think they're actually going to get full operation and legal paperwork for, almost till next spring. I mean, I know we talk about it a lot, but dealing with the federal government is a whole, whole 'nother level. And part of that is getting ASUS approved as a public utility provider. Even they run the wastewater systems at five different bases, huge ones across the country, much bigger than Cape Cod.
Bud, give people an update on the boardwalk.
Yeah, so, trying to think of the shortened version. So, you know, we issued construction documents for the boardwalk. Bids were due, we had to extend it several times. I forget the exact date, but bids were due in February? Yeah, March, early March. And so, when we considered the two lowest bidders who were very close, we ended up going with the second bidder because we didn't feel that the low bidder was responsive and responsible in terms of the bid. And so, the low bidder filed a protest with the Attorney General's office. That hearing was held two weeks ago, I think, and we haven't gotten a decision from the AG's office yet. They told us it should be around the end of the month. You know, that's within the next week, so we'll see how it goes. So, we haven't heard anything yet, so we have to wait on that.
We'll do statements, yeah, correspondent stays announced, future items to follow-up, and we'll jump to the public hearing. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of quick things. On the 25th Tuesday night, I attended a school special policy subcommittee meeting, and they held a public forum. They received impressive public support to dedicate a school playground in the memory of Jonathan Nelson. Last night, I attended the school committee meeting, compliments on the social and emotional learning programs instituted at Forestale and Oak Ridge Schools. The policy subcommittee completed review of policies. Suggestions were confirmed by the committee members at large, progress on the superintendent's annual goals and evaluation cycle, and congratulations to Dr. David Quinn, who will be joining Sandwich as the new assistant school superintendent.
Anybody else? All right, we're going to move to the first one, and Bud, you can jump in if one of these had moved. Yeah, okay. So, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 138, the Sandwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 27th, at 7:10 PM in the Sandwich Historic Town Hall Auditorium located at 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Mass. They consider the application for a transfer of an annual on-premises all-alcohol license located at 149 Main Street, Sandwich, Mass., 02563, from Daniel Webster, Inc., doing business as the Daniel Webster Inn and Spa, Jason M. Catania as manager, to JHKHIX Keen LLC, doing business as the Daniel Webster Inn and Spa, Jason M. Catania as manager. Anyone wishing to be heard on this subject will be afforded an opportunity at that time. Have a motion?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. So, if you guys could just give us a rundown of what...
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Attorney John Meradian, Democus Law Offices. With me is Jason Catania, the proposed manager of record. JHMKHIX Keen LLC is buying the Daniel Webster Inn Spa, and we're seeking a transfer of the license and approval of Jason as the manager of record. This is the transfer of license, new business ownership is coming in. Jason is the manager on the prior ownership, he's going to remain there on the current ownership. There are another changes, just a change in the hotel ownership group that purchased the hotel. Jason is tip certified, he's been working there, running the hotel for a few years now, as you guys know him already, so just a changeover on that.
And, because basically right now you are listed as the manager and holder of license, I think, you know, it's an administrative change for those of all. And I'm assuming all the checks came in.
Yeah, all the normal background checks and all input from all the department was all very positive, and through the years, the Webster and Jason have done an exceptional job overseeing their license to make sure the proper things are done, so no issues whatsoever.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions?
Any changes anticipated to the physical plant?
I do know the ownership has, has money in, planned and placed to make just updates, renovations, nothing changing to the physical structure additions, things like that yet. Maybe in the future to improve the product and improve for our guests, but nothing on the books there, just, you know, fixing up physical things that maybe need to be done that haven't been done since, but some renovations of rooms, things like that, nothing drastic. Mostly business as usual and just trying to increase business and increase the product's quality in the community.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
You get a motion on the...
Okay. Motion to approve transfer of an annual on-premises all-alcohol liquor license located at 149 Main Street, Sandwich, from Daniel Webster, Inc., doing business as the Daniel Webster Inn, to JHKHIX Keen LLC, doing business as the Daniel Webster Inn and Spa, Jason M. Catania, manager.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, wishes for success, continued success.
And this is, this will open, okay. Okay, for the next public hearing, Sandwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 27th, 2023, 7:15 PM in the Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, 130 Main Street, Sandwich, Mass., 02563, upon the petition of N-Star Electric, doing business as Eversource Energy. Two, work order number 7636643, request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures in, under, along, and across the following public ways, Ridgewood Drive, seven pole boxes, Palmer Road, two pole boxes, and Mill Road, one pole box. Anyone wishing to be heard will be afforded an opportunity at that time.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do I hear any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open.
So, I think Heather's going to explain some stuff, yeah.
Just briefly, there's one here, there's a note on this that we thought this might be postponed. The Director of Public Works hadn't connected with Eversource prior to this evening, but was able to do that today. I mean, you have a very brief memo from the Director where he's recommending it. There are a couple of bullets that he's communicating to Eversource, just recognizing the need for it, and specifically acknowledging that the pole work will be located outside of the paved roadway, but future Eversource work in the Lakewood Hills area will require a separate petition and approval by the Department of Public Works. So, I know there's someone from Eversource here as well, but that, those meetings occurred today, but this one is ready to be approved.
So, so this is not postponed?
No. There's, they'll take public comment, yeah.
Is there anybody here?
Yeah.
Do the folks from Eversource want to, in the tree, everybody, anybody want to come down? There's any questions? Do you guys have any questions? Yeah, so if you could, yeah. So, we do, we do have representatives from Eversource here as well as, no, I understand, I'm just saying we have representatives, or they are representatives. He just pushes the green light.
Our names are Marion and Rand Billingham. We've been married and lived in Sandwich for 43 years. We live in Lakewood Hills, and our question to Eversource, I've been talking to them for almost three years now, and we were basically told that the poles, when they put the poles in, they would go over our property and not land in the center of our land on our lawns.
That it would be outside of our living space, because we have, like, a rail fence that defines our property.
I have pictures, but...
From the power line road, and now they've placed this pole.
Well, they haven't placed the pole yet, they got a stake in the yard.
Well, they have a stake in the yard.
And this is what this is all about, and...
And we're heartbroken, and we feel deceived.
What's your street address?
78 Mill Road.
When we talked to them almost three years ago, they told us, well, really two years now, that they could trince, go across the property. The poles are moving the 28K line over into the center. I don't know if you have pictures or anything of this. We're at 78 Mill Road, and we've been there since 1980. I've dealt with Carm Electric, N-Star, and now Eversource. When Carm Electric gave me permission to do what we did to the property in the town of Sandwich.
I just want to make sure that I get this correct. You're at 78 or 77?
78.
It doesn't, this, this shows it's going on the other side of the street.
I don't see a pole on the property.
Excuse me?
I don't see a pole on the...
The way that this is laid out, it's showing that the proposed pole, 208 over 30.5, is going to be located on 77 Mill Road, William and Alice.
That pole, yes, that's going there.
Show them a picture.
That's yours. This is the pole we're talking about.
Right, so, um... Yeah.
The Eversource reps maybe come up and...
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
Yeah.
See, they waited, they waited till the very end to do this. They haven't put the pole in yet, but the stake is there now. Yeah, I remember you, but what they're doing right now is they're coming very quickly to put these poles in, and they're waiting on mine, but I won't let them in the property yet until I get this rectified.
I don't see anything with them on.
Why, show the pictures?
Maybe you could show it to the, these people.
Let, let's do this, let, just for the, let's let Eversource respond to your question first, based on the maps that were submitted to us, and then, you know, if need be, we can come back to you. Okay. So, the question that we have from the Billings at 78 Mill Road is that they're showing that there's a stake mark in their property showing that a pole's going there, but on what was submitted to us, it's showing that the new pole is going to be across the street at 77 Mill Road.
And that's what we have as well. I have it at 77, not at 78, as it's on the maps that you all have also.
If you could maybe speak into the, if the green light's not coming on in that one?
It's on.
Okay, you're okay.
I just wasn't close enough, I'm sorry. So, the maps that you all have are at 77, not at 78, so they're across the street.
Okay, so there's no work that's going to occur on their property?
Not that I can see from the maps. I know that we do have one of our directors for project services in Eversource, we have our construction supervisor, as well as an engineer and rights and survey heading out to the property to speak with the owners next week. I believe the day would be Tuesday, but it's not, time is not confirmed yet.
Okay, so just for purposes of approvals and for you, for you tonight, that if we do approve this, that currently, I just want to be on record with you guys as well, that there's not a pole going on number 78 on their property, correct?
Not according to the mapping that we have. That's what I'm looking at right now. That's all I can speak on, is what we have, the mapping that we have.
Are you concerned about it?
And I, so I'm not familiar enough with the, with the placement, with, for the construction placement. I work, yeah. So, yeah, the pole that we're seeing, it's going at 77 Mill Road, and it would, it's looking like the wires would go across...
The public way.
The public way. And I know there are, are poles further back in your yard that connect there.
Hold on, sir, 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 hold on, because I can't have you yelling to them, and it's, we're going to do this in a worldly fashion, if everybody's going to be hurt. So, what is your confidence level? Because I'm going to tell you, if we approve this, and then some, if a truck shows up to his yard, it's, it's a no-go. That'll be a work stop. Are you confident, or do you want to come back to us once they do the site survey next week?
I think, I think it's better to wait.
We can wait until they have the conversation on Tuesday.
I think it's better to wait just to be sure, because there could always be something that pops up that we don't know about right now. So, I'd rather take the time to be sure and not make a jump decision right now.
Okay, so, so what we'll do then, if it's okay with you guys as well... So, right, so what we're, what we're proposing as of right now is that we're going to bag this. We're not going to vote on this, we're going to postpone it so that their engineers and the survey people can come out to, to address your concerns on your property. That does not mean that we're moving this forward, it means that they're going to have to come back, we're going to have to repost this and have another public hearing, or we can continue it.
You can postpone it to a date certain, and then, that's fine.
Do you have a date that you think this will be wrapped up by?
I know the conversation is set to happen on, on next Tuesday. I'm hoping that we can come to a very swift resolution after that, because we have been working on constructions on other ends of the project. So, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful it could be within a week.
The 11th.
Yeah, so it would be the 11th of May, okay. Hold on a second, so... Okay, can you, hold on, all right. So you, so we're going to, go ahead.
I guess my point is, I gather from what you said, you haven't really talked to them before tonight?
We've had a representative from our project be out there, but she was not a part of the previous conversations in years past.
Could you make a suggestion, is that you talk with these folks before everybody leaves tonight, so everybody understands?
Oh, yes, and I believe our, our senior manager in our department spoke with you, was it yesterday or the day before, to play, to try and schedule a meeting with you for Tuesday?
Can you, all right.
Could you sit at the mic?
You're going to have to come down and speak on the microphone, because this is all on record, public record.
What's your name again?
Alexia.
Alexia.
Hi, nice to see you again.
I talked to a, I talked to Amanda from Eversource the other day, and she told me that the stake that they put on my property is that, that's where that pole will go. And that's, we go back two years, I was told they could transverse from the pole that's going to be on 77, right, right on the street, they could transverse and go over my fence. They told me that. Because the old 28K line, I measured that out, and they've shortened the distance between poles now, so they want to put it inside the property, inside my fenced-in area where my grandchildren play, and also, if they put a pole there, there's going to be guy wires that got to hold it in place, it's going to completely destroy not only the value of my home, but I can't use that area.
And Amanda did come back and share that with us, especially that it was a very, very hardy family. very hardy family home, that you do have your family there. And so that's why we want to get into a further discussion of what the possibilities could be. I know that there were a couple that were floated around over the past two years.
First, I wanted it underground, and they said no, it was no way, it's too expensive.
I know, that was not a possibility.
Even though they were going to go up Quaker Meeting House Road with it and put it all underground, but somehow, the powers-to-be decided to take it this way. Because with a weak link, it's only a couple houses that they have to deal with. So, they said they could do this for us, you know, so it doesn't, I spent, I've been forty years, three years, I'm, I'm in, was in, I sailed in the Merchant Marine for thirty years. My wife and I have been together for forty-three years now, in Sandwich. And we built this property, and the peoples-to-be in Carm Electric, and N-Star, and now you guys. And I know progress has to be made, but everybody's worked with me in the past. And, you know, it's just, it's just heartbreaking right now to go through this, you know, for, and if they don't do anything about it, I don't know, you know, it's, it's very, you know, it's tough. Plus, it's dangerous. My driveway goes right down the center of this, where the poles are going to be. And when it snows, and I've told these people, I'm out there snowblowing in the middle of the winter, I don't know if you know how these power, power lines work, but when the sun comes out, the snow on the top, it turns to ice, then it comes down in these sheets that are ten to fifteen feet long. It will kill you if you get hit with it. And they're going to put this right down the center of my driveway, and they told me, oh, we could move your driveway. But no one said anything about it. And those are the things I got to know, I mean, this is...
Well, that's what I'm hoping the Tuesday's conversation will be. We're going to have members from many departments out there so that we can address these possibilities, instead of just taking them back with us. We're there to address them on-site so we can go through the possibilities and really, really string it out with you.
And, and getting at that pole, that's all, that whole fenced-in area is bushed out, which, N-Star, and Carm Electric, and even you guys, you know, you, you guys planted a lot of that stuff, chopped down trees, you planted these bushes for me twenty years ago. Now, to get the trucks in, to put that pole in, they're going to cut all that down, and then they're going to, for you to get in there, it's all going to be wide open. And that fence was put in by us for a long time, and it, it keeps the four-wheel drives and the motorcyclists that use that power line all the time from coming up through my, up my driveway. And just working around at EverSource, if they're going to do something like that, how are they going to, how are they going to protect that while they're doing the work? You know, it's just going to, it's going to just completely destroy you.
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt because I need to, I need to move this along, because this is more of a conversation I think you guys need to have on-site, not necessarily in the, in public view. We had one other person that wanted to speak on it before we moved this, and we're...
My only, my only last thing I wanted to say, so you guys understand, this has been going on for three years, and then they came in, they did not talk to me for almost a year, and then they, all of a sudden, they started bringing this equipment in to do this work. And it took us to call them again before anything got started. And now, now it's, you're at crunch time right now, and no one has talked to us about it. I didn't even know they were going to do it now, until all of a sudden, they did it.
So that's not something that we like to hear. We like to be communicative, and that, that's frustrating, that it took you to call us, for us to get that information to you. I know this project, we have been in permitting since the beginning in twenty-seventeen, so it has taken quite a while, and it's been very slow for us. But that's something I can take back, that we, we strive to be more communicative with our butters, so that we can give the information ahead of time, so it's not this type of stressful situation.
Okay, so let's, I just want to hear from the other person, that, if you can come down, and... Again, if you just said your name and address.
My name is Jim Foley, I live at six Palmer Road, any Sandwich. As you can see on your posting, there were proposed two pool boxes somewhere around my street. I would urge you not to support this tonight, due to the lack of information coming from EverSource. All the property of butters on Palmer Road, if they have a pool box in front of their house, they don't know about it, because EverSource does not communicate. There's a major construction going on in the High Lines, major. Poles, lines, people going back and forth, and big trucks. Not one EverSource person is on-site to answer any question. You can't talk to the contractor, you're not going to get anywhere. You have to talk to the people, a foot in the bill. Nobody's there, there's no communication. And until we get those answers, I don't think we should be moving forward with this. And thank you.
Okay, so I think what we're going to do is we're going to, or I'm going to propose, and I'm going to have, one of you's going to have to do a motion, is to delay this until the eleventh of May, and hopefully that'll give the time for the, EverSource engineers to get in touch with the homeowners, specifically to this public hearing, because we have several others tonight that we have to get to as well. And what I'll do is, because the next, the next four of them are for you guys, if you guys want to come up and maybe camp out here for the next four, because you're, you have the next four.
Explain a pool box?
Yeah, we're going to have them go through all that, so, I, I know what it is, but, yeah, so, shutdown's underground. And if you guys could maybe just explain for the public what a pole box is and what this, should I have you do that from the get-go, but...
Okay. Pole box?
And could either one of you just explain briefly what a pole box is and what...
I don't know what a pole box is.
Hmm? Yeah.
The pole box?
Yeah, what a pole box is, just for the public's knowledge, like what it's, what it is, and what the purpose of this is. Because I think these, the next...
He's going to look it up for us.
Right.
Is your electric underground, Jim?
Is your electric underground currently?
Uh, yes. So the pole boxes have a method you're using, because they're going to come down off the pole on Mill Road, and then they're going to go underground down on the road. They need to get into your service, and that's what the pole box function is.
Access to the wires, right.
That's why there's eight of them, then, folks.
Yep.
Maybe there'd be as many as there are homes on the road.
Right. Okay, so...
Before we go on to the next one, make sure you take a vote about the first public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, yep.
Oh, okay, for the liquor?
Yeah, no, for the seven fifteen, yeah.
Right, and that's to postpone the eleventh, correct?
Yeah, I'd say continue the public hearing and postpone it till May eleventh.
Right, so can I get a motion to postpone, it's a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed.
Motion to postpone the hearing until May eleventh at seven fifteen PM.
Now, clarify.
Okay, yeah.
I see four things here now. What, what are we postponing?
Just the first one.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, yes.
Which would be work order seven, six, three, six, six, four, three.
Can I just speak, because I, I think what I recommended was that you keep the hearing open, because you're going to want to hear from people. Will you close the public hearing? You could just make a commitment that you're going to reopen the public hearing on the eleventh. That might be good, so that you can at least hear what the resolution is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, amended as such, and, and I have a question though, for EverSource. Does that give you enough time? What do you need until May twenty-fifth?
Um, our rep, excuse me. Based on the communication I have from our community relations representative, Rony Goldstein, the understanding was that it would be pushed to May twenty-fifth.
Okay, can do that?
Okay, so we'll do that then. We're going to move it to the twenty-fifth of May for the hearing back here. This hearing is going to now get continued to the twenty-fifth, not the eleventh. Yes.
Okay, so we're going to suspend the public hearing and reopen it on May twenty-fifth at seven fifteen PM.
And I, I wouldn't give a time, because we may have other public hearings already scheduled for that night. I would just say for that evening.
Okay.
Yeah.
And with that month, we should be able to have a resolution for you.
As amended. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to May twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is moved to May twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Next one.
All right, our next public hearing. This one that we proceed on this one.
Can I just ask, I mean, we were told things before the meeting, and now I'm all confused. Is this next one at seven twenty being withdrawn?
Which one would that be, the underground?
This is for...
Application six, seven, one, seven, seven, eight, one.
So from my understanding, we were all but the hearing for the Mill Road activity was to be postponed until the twenty-fifth.
But six, seven, one, seven, seven, eight, one was withdrawn.
Okay.
So that one's withdrawn?
Yes.
You probably don't even have to open the hearing, because it was withdrawn, yeah.
Right, okay, so we'll go to the next one. So I think a nine, seven, four, you guys good to proceed on that one?
Is that Quaker?
That was for Quaker Meeting House Road?
Yes.
Nine, seven, yeah.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Sure?
Yeah, it's debatable.
Okay.
Service Road is withdrawn.
Okay.
So this is a petition covering the installation of one joint own...
Yes, I have to, we have to do the whole reading of the thing. Sandwich Board of Select want to hold a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven twenty-five PM in the Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, one thirty Main Street, Sandwich, Mass., O-two-five-six-three. Upon the petition of N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon New England Incorporated Two, work order number one-one-zero-five-three-nine-seven-four, request permission to locate and relocate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following way or ways, Quaker Meeting House Road, installation of one joint own pole, forty-six over forty-nine point seven-five. Anyone wishing to be heard will be afforded an opportunity at that time.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
You now, this public hearing is now open.
I should say our tree warden, Craig Gettis, is here as well, if there's any questions. Sure.
There's, there's three mics there, guys. Give them jump down on that one.
So I reviewed the pole placement. There are three town-owned trees that need to be removed. Per the town bylaws, per every tree removed on a non-scenic road, one tree must be replaced. EverSource is donating nine trees tomorrow for Arbor Day, so they are fulfilling their requirements.
Just, just for clarification, where are the trees coming down on, on the, I'm trying to figure it out on the map here.
Did, did they send along the site pictures?
Just the map, this...
Just, just map, let me come over there and I'll, I'll point.
This is Kai's way.
So the three trees are essentially right on top of this red dot. There's a fourth tree that I can't confirm if it's on private property or not. I did let EverSource know that they should remove that fourth tree, but they're going to have to make the determination whether it's on town land or not. But again, they have, they have satisfied their requirements.
The substation's here, right?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, this is the entrance road to the substation in there. So there's three oaks, less, all of them are less than twelve inches in diameter. They've been heavily pruned, because there are currently power lines here.
Right.
So they're, they're pretty nasty trees to begin with. Okay?
Makes sense. Do you understand that?
Yeah, I'm, just, I, I'm going to, at this point, I'm, I'm just going to say this, because for the, for the public at home and the people here that are here this evening, EverSource, I don't mean to throw you guys under the bus on this, but this stuff is, is, what's being submitted, in contrast to what we've received from you guys in the past, I would say is extremely lacking. And this is frustrating, because it's taken us time to go through this, we don't have everything in front of us, and that this is all part of public record, so that people that log online and look at this and see where, you know, just like the neighbors that were just here, and it's missing, you know, where the trees are coming down, where they're being cut down, we're being asked to make decisions on these things that do have a, you know, a real impact to not only the, the town's aesthetics, but as well as taxpayers, and that we're missing a lot of this information in comparison to the packets that were submitted I know that everybody's signed off on this, as, as far as I can tell internally here, but, you know, in the future, if, if the board so chooses, I, I would, I would request that you guys come with a much cleaner, neater package to us to...
At least a picture.
And pictures showing, you know, where the work areas are, what they are, and what's going to be impacted. Because right now, we just have a basically engineering map, and it doesn't show where the trees are coming down, and the tree warden is showing us where the trees are, you know, coming down, so...
Are you, would you request in the future clearer overhead maps, or would you rather photos in the streets, that kind of thing?
Both.
I would say that, and I also think, I mean, look in the mirror, I think the town, we're not going to advertise another public hearing until we have something from DPW saying they support it. We rush to try to get these on here, so we're being responsive, and we're not ready. You know, we're handing out papers the night of, and it's, it's not your fault, it's ours. So in the future, we're not going to advertise a public hearing until we have input from DPW and it's all put to bed, because it's not worth us coming back multiple nights on, the first one was way different, but most of these are really minor, should just fly right through, so, right.
But it would be nice if, if you had, like, the trees, just the picture of, so we can orient what, where it is and what's going on, because as soon as you start cutting down trees, somebody in Sandwich is going to call somebody.
Yeah, I get a, I get a phone call anytime EverSource is working in town. So site pictures of the trees, I know EverSource staff's arborist, so if they could do a little bit more analysis as to the, the species of trees and the diameter of the trees, give us some more description, definitely be helpful.
Okay.
System arborist who are supposed to have done this work.
Yes, we do have arborists on our team, so I'm surprised that that's not in there. That's something I can bring back to my team.
Put this, help me to crack, because it should be a system arborist who feels our arborist, and by the time it reaches us, the policy decision will be made. So, put a crack together. Which I understand has changed.
Yes, so he came on board, I believe, in the last seven months, but I will take, or give you my information and take yours, if I can put you in touch with him.
Yes, please.
Okay, great.
But I want to stress, these last two are fine, we're just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So what are we doing on this one?
Do we, does anybody from, well, that's for the public, is there any other questions the board has? Does anybody from the public want to be heard on this? Seeing none?
You good with it? Oh, let's go.
Motion to close the public hearing then.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's now closed.
Okay, so Mr. Gettis, got to hook you with this, but, but you're comfortable with this plan?
I am. The trees, like I said, are heavily pruned from current utility at corridors, so that they're not great trees to begin with. They do lean over the road, so if there was ever a storm event, they could potentially fail into the, the roadway. And, and by putting in this pole, it will alleviate a couple issues for them. There, there's a long span of wires there, and, and the trees, like I said, aren't, aren't great, so, and like I was telling the other select member, that fourth tree, they should verify whose land it's on before it's removed, because I, I'm not a surveyor.
No, I'm going to ask this, and you... No. I'm going to ask this, and you may not have the answer for it. You're moving, you're moving a pole thirty-six feet one direction from where it is. Is that the, I'm seeing on this map? I just wonder why.
Quaker, yeah. So we're moving.
Could be.
Just moving it in line with the right of way.
It looks like it moves out, Patrick, from the line. There's a line there. Looks like, is that the, oh.
To pick up the slack in the line.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I think it's on the room property, too.
Too far of a stretch to try and shorten.
Yeah.
It's in the corner.
Okay with it?
Yeah, I'm good.
You want to do it? Yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you all very much. Motion to approve EverSource request work order number one-one-zero-five-three-nine-seven-four, Quaker Meeting House Road installation of one joint-owned pole, number forty-six slash four-nine point seven-five.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Okay, we'll go to the next one. Sandwich Board of Select want to hold a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven-thirty P. M. In the Sandwich Town Hall Auditorium, one thirty Main Street, Sandwich, Mass., oh-two-five-six-three. Upon the petition of N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy, work order number one-two-one-one-two-four-seven-one, request permission to locate underground cables, conduits, manholes, including the necessary sustaining and protective fixtures in, under, along, and across the following way or ways. Jan Sebastian Drive, install one manhole, number one-zero-two-six-eight over two-hundred and nineteen plus or minus of two-to-four inch conduit. Anyone wishing to be heard will be afforded at that time.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Public hearing is now open. You, do you have any description of the work that's going to be? Looks like another handle.
Okay.
A petition covering the installation of one manhole, um, and conduit in case in the right of way of Jan Sebastian Drive.
Okay.
So the, so there's an underground, uh, looks like the, the dotted line is at the underground, uh, wire now? Must be.
Underground, the red, the red in the box.
No, the dotted line that runs parallel to the solid line?
Yes.
So that's, that's the existing cable underground?
Yes.
So you, you want access to that cable? That's what this box?
Okay. Mike, just for clarification, the dotted line is actually the right of way?
Right.
It's not the existing cable. The existing cable looks like it's a.
Black line?
Yeah, and they're going to tee off of that to put in another proposed manhole, um, outside of the road layout, it looks like.
Same thing, they're, they're parallel.
It almost looks like they're replacing the existing manhole, probably with a different s- style, if I had to guess. Is that your pad? Okay, okay. Anybody from the board have other questions? Anybody from the public want to talk about the manhole on Jan Sebastian? Seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I get a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve EverSource request W slash O, number, work order, number one-two-one-one-two-four-seven-one, Jan Sebastian Drive, install one manhole, number one-zero-two-six-eight slash two-zero-zero and nineteen feet plus a minus of two-to-four inch conduit.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business, fiscal year twenty-four budget update.
Yeah, so about halfway back in your packet, uh, there's a one-page summary, uh, similar to what's printed in the back of the warrant, and that's the recommended budget for, uh, the F. Y. twenty-four fiscal year, and that's what's being voted on next Monday night. Um, within the last, uh, week and a half, we received the House budget numbers, and I just thought I'd show you those. The bottom line is that we're still in really good shape. What's a little bit perplexing, and I have a summary of those in there, and, and on the, the strange numbers, I've circled and read. So even though our charter school, uh, our, our tuition assessments are, you know, about four-point-seven million, almost the same as what they were last year so far, uh, the state's actually going to decrease our reimbursements by almost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So I have no clue why. Um, there's no rhyme or reason. I'm just venting. Um, so that hurts us, obviously, on the revenue side, but conversely, when you go to the next page, which is our assessments at the bottom, um, we've budgeted a ten percent increase. Um, I think I've shared with you guys, and this isn't a misstatement, uh, since the inception of the charter school and the sending tuition assessment line item, it's gone up by more than a thousand percent on average every year since it first went into effect. What's weird about this upcoming year is they're actually claiming it's going to drop by about four percent. Um, there's still two, uh, three more hurdles to go with the state budget, the Senate, the Conference Committee, then the governor's final sign-off. So it wouldn't surprise me if numbers changed, but if they stay the way the House has set it, you know, we're going to save about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand above what we thought we were going to have to pay. So if you plug in the House numbers, and I'm just getting to the last, the last one-page summary, and it circled and read up at the top, it says House, we go from roughly a hundred thousand dollar balance to a six-hundred thousand dollar balance. So it's good news. It's just strange how we get there. Um, I just don't trust the numbers this early in the process, and we say this early, even though we're voting it next Monday, it's just that the state takes a lot longer than us to do their budget. So I just wanted to point that out. Bottom line is, we're still in really good shape for town meeting. We're still not taxing people over three-and-a-half million, um, what could be charged. We're still putting aside, uh, over one-and-a-half million in reserves, so we're in good shape. That was it. And it's, it.
My only question is, if, if giving us less, two-hundred thousand less, how did we go up five-hundred thousand?
Yeah, I'm confused. I don't know. I don't know. It's because their assessment, their assessment isn't up as much as we had planned. So that's the reason we're to the good. But you're right, if that changes, we're in trouble.
Nuts.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Our estimate was conservative, though.
Yes, yeah. In terms of the ten percent, we thought so. I mean, there's been many years it's been a lot more than that, but the last couple of years, it's been a, around that, so. It was educated, conservative, I would say.
It's better to be on that side of the street than the other. Well, yeah, it's a big swing, though.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? All right, we're going to go on to the annual town meeting.
Um, yeah, so yesterday was the moderator's, uh, preparation meeting to go through the warrant, so we did that. Um, I don't know if you want me to just jump to the hot topic, but basically, all the articles we went over, um, you know, talked about who's going to read the motions, what presentations were needed. Um, I think we're good to go on all of them. Uh, there was the issue that was raised about Article sixteen on requesting special legislation to expand the number of annual, uh, liquor licenses, both, uh, on-premises, i.e. restaurants, and off-premises, package and convenience stores. So there was the question that came up, so I did hand out to the board before the meeting. I, I'll walk you through this, and this is only if you want to consider it. So the motion at the top of the page, the original motion, um, and I actually have three extras if anyone wants them. Um, the motion at the top, sorry, at the top of the page, uh, is what, the way it was written by town, uh, approved by town council before yesterday's meeting. So if the board, rather than the public, wanted to divide the article, um, there would uh, probably have to be three motions. So the first would be to divide the article, so that's the first one that you see underneath the line that goes across the, about the top third of the page. If that is voted yes, then there would be two separate motions, one for on-premises licenses, i.e. restaurants, and then that would be acted on, and then there'd be a second motion for off-premises license, off-premises licenses, and that would be oper, uh, acted on separately. So in effect, it would make two articles out of one, the first one looking at restaurant licenses, the second looking at, um, package and convenience store licenses. If, if the board's interested, and if you were interested in doing that, you know, I can incorporate these changes, so when the motions get distributed Monday night, it would reflect this, but it's, it's up to the board on what you think. Brian Riley did say, when I talked to him today from town council's office, that if the motion to divide fails, then you'd have to go back to the original motion. So.
And I, you know, one of the things I just want to address, because I know that it was brought up this evening, is, is kind of, i- i- it's somewhat confusing, but for us, we deal with it a lot, is how we got here. And really, how we got here was that there was a, um, the board, myself, town hall, we were getting a lot of requests for additional liquor licenses for rest, you know, specifically, it was surrounding restaurants. So when we went back to the state and asked them, how do we ob- obtain more licenses, um, they said that it would have to go through as basically a special act, has to be voted on at town meeting, then it goes, um, to the State House to get, you know, additional licenses. Um, we asked for, you know, we were under, initially under the impression that it was blanket, you know, we could ask for a hundred. You know, if you look at Mashpee, Yarmouth, you know, some of the other towns on Cape, they have unlimited uncapped license capacity. Um, Sandwich does not. We voted against that in nineteen eighty-five, and this is really just to give a little bit of context as to what myself, you know, some of the other board members, if they want to jump in, if there was a different sentiment, then, you know, please feel free to do so. Um, in that, when we started going through this process to gain more licenses, we were contacted by current license holders, um, specifically, you know, some of the ones that have either beer and wine at some of the retail establishments, and then they also have a seasonal all-alcohol license that allows them to sell, you know, the hard alcohol, you know, as a seasonal license holder, as well as a beer and wine, uh, reseller as well. So what we did was we lumped all these into one motion, so that would be clean going to the state, and, you know, current license holders were asked, and, you know, some of the other, you know, restaurants asked for their licenses to be upgraded as well. You know, this was not done as a slight to anybody, any current license holders. This was something that we looked at, um, you know, as a way to advance the town. Then it came back that it has to be tied to specific addresses. It's not, you know, it's a very specific process. Um, it was informed to us, it was basically the same process that, um, I believe it was Foxborough went through, where they assigned, you know, when they did Patriot Place, all those licenses or new licenses that were assigned, basically on a, a, address, you know, based, uh, thing. So that's really how we got to, you know, this evening. It was not, you know, something that we just, you know, pulled out of the sky. It was really, you know, the, I believe that the list that was submitted, um, Melissa, I think you can confirm that those are all current liquor license holders, correct, on the, no, there's a couple that were added, correct? So, um, that's, that's how we got to where we are.
Okay, and, and, and this, this process was, uh, developed through discussion with the A. B. C. C. and town council and our state representatives as well?
Correct.
And probably talked about it months at your meetings.
Yeah, and I, I think, though, after listening to that meeting we had yesterday, the liquor store owners, uh, it didn't appear, appear to me when we were doing this about geography and, you know, how close they could be to each other. There were some that are very close, and they raised a good point about, about that. And the fact that, uh, if a license is issued to a location and that location folds, according to the information we received yesterday, that license goes back to the town to be used anywhere they wanted. That's what we were told. I, I assume that's right. So I, I really don't have a problem with splitting it and letting the townspeople decide, you know, what they want to do about it, you know? Because we've already made it know we're trying to get them, so that if we cut out a group, they're going to say, well, we, what are you doing that to us for? And we got the liquor store owner saying the competition's going to be pretty big when it doubles in size, so let the voters decide.
Right.
Yeah, I, uh, if I may, I think that the motion to split it should come off the floor, not from the stairs.
Yeah, it could come that way.
Can I, uh, I'd like to get some input from these gentlemen that own some stores here, and so we get a little more information, probably.
Yeah.
Again, Brian Anderson. I'm the owner of Cape Cod Markets, which is Canterbury Markets, D. V. A. Uh, I do realize that I live in a town, Falmouth, and Heather is very familiar with Falmouth's expansion. She wasn't there in eighty-five, but I was a town meeting member, and we opened up the pouring licenses. That did not affect package store licensing. I don't think you can find a location anywhere on Cape Cod that will have the concentration of package store licenses that you have proposed. There's one one-point mile, one-mile section that another package store owner brought to my attention today on Route six A. Not necessarily area around area, that after you pass this, there's going to be seven licenses, beer and wine or liquor, in one-point-one miles. It's hard to find that in the city, never mind anywhere on Cape Cod. What you're proposing in liquor licensing for package stores, I don't believe has ever happened on Cape Cod. I'm familiar with three towns in particular that I own licenses in, but have been active with many other, uh, liquor store owners and have attended many Massachusetts Package Store Association meetings and have testified at the State House, because the next step after town meeting is this goes to the State House. And by the way, I agree with you on splitting it. It is not our intent to slow down or stop the restaurants at all. I think you've shown a need. I think they've shown a need for those licenses. We specifically asked its package store owners what need was shown to have this massive expansion of liquor licenses in a concentration that isn't seen in any other town. If it was requests from particular owners, I, I wish they were here and could explain to us what it is. These will all be questions that I know, I've had pay, I've had customers at my store ask me, why are the selectmen proposing this? And I said, you're going to have to ask them at town meeting, at town meeting, because I've asked the question and no one has given me an answer. Every time an answer is given, there's a long discussion about pouring licenses. We're not asking about the pouring licenses. It's the package store licenses. Also, this expands a lot of beer and wine licenses to full liquor. Presently, they only sell beer and wine. I have seen very few articles go to the State House proposing that. If, if you want to, I, when we're testifying in the State House, we're going to just testify, we have no idea why they did it or why they proposed it. We've asked, they haven't explained, and we have actually prepared a FOIA request to, if it does pass town meeting, to give the bud, to try to get the actual specifics, so we can talk intelligently when we get to the State House. We still, to this day, don't understand why this massive expansion of liquor license is necessary in town from six to eleven. We've never seen it happen anywhere on Cape Cod. Chapter fifteen, off-premise licensing. Yes, it has happened in nineteen eighty-five. It has happened at many other occasions for section twelve, pouring licenses. I live in Falmouth. There's wonderful, small, little Thai, Thai, Italian, Greek restaurants, because they have the extra licenses. So that's our. So that's our question. We'd really like the information at some point in time for the publics watching this evening, or they can ask on town meeting floor individually of the selectmen, exactly what data, what specifics, what recommendations or what requests did you have, email, telephone calls, otherwise, at the time that you made this decision? The only other question I have, you're dividing the question, usually the person that divides the question, the sponsor here, has the choice to either move it in a positive or move it and ask it not to be passed. Will you be moving the section fifteen off-premise license as a positive motion? Asking town meeting to vote for it?
So my, and again, guys, you can jump in if, you know, but my thing is that these, the, the requests for the liquor licenses came from current liquor license, you know, holders as well as new requests for liquor license for the, so the expansion. Once they, and this is my, you know, interpretation as well, is that once it was known that we were going for this, we then had, I believe the request came in once we announced that we were going for additional licenses, then other people came forward and requested the licenses as well. And that's what you're seeing before you, is that it was a request from the public. So when we were going for these additional licenses, people that came in, we added those to a list. We submitted that list, and that's how we came up with this list.
The next question will be, have all of these individuals now agreed that they know that it's tied to their real estate, agreed to accept the new license? I, I personally spoke to one. It's very uncertain whether he would accept it because he leases and his landlord has gone up substantially. And as soon as he has a full package store license, his landlord is in charge. Right now, he has a beer and wine and a seasonal license. He can come to the selectmen and ask to transfer it to a different location. If he accepts this new license, you can't transfer it to a newer location unless he gives it up.
That's, I, I was, that's a business decision that he would have to make, that's not.
Right. So we don't know with these people that requested whether they're actually still in favor after it was written?
We, we don't.
Okay. And is there any other, other than people asked for something free for nothing, because most of us paid for our licenses, and they said, sure, we'll take something free? Is there any other information that was available, data, statistics, points of need showing that there was a, a need in town to radically expand the number of licenses?
I, I would say that the request came from both current and new liquor license applicants that wanted to expand either their current license or get a new license as presented. There was no, you know, we're not trying to pull a fast one or anything. This is something that we identified as a need through the amount of requests that we got as a board and individual members. And we compiled this list, the list, you know, it was people that applied for it or asked to be put on that list. And there was no, and, you know, after, you know, as Charlie pointed out, you know, we had a meeting with the A B C C, there was meetings with, you know, the state reps. That's how we, that's, we were advised as to how to proceed to get additional licenses for the town. And that's what you see before you. That's, that's how we were advised to proceed to get additional licenses. And yes, we did lump, you know, off and on premises together into one list. So that would be one, you know, thing to vote on, that it would be one act at the state level.
Has there been any discussion or will there be any discussion of what the selectmen plan on doing with all the licenses that will be coming back to you? The beer and wine licenses and the seasonal liquor licenses are still available under the quota system and will be licenses after these new ones are created?
If, if somebody walks in the town hall tomorrow morning and asks for a seasonal license, you know, we have unlimited seasonal licenses, which I'm sure you're aware of. The beer and wine licenses that would come back in, you know, would have to go through the normal vetting process and then would be subject to a hearing here at town hall before the board.
So there's unlimited seasonal off-premise licenses?
I believe, yeah.
Yep. Every town has that, yep.
Okay. And the beer and wine licenses you feel could be issued to another five locations in town besides the licenses we already have? In the future?
If they so choose to turn it back in.
Like I said, it'll be the largest number of concentration of liquor store and beer and wine licenses anywhere on Cape Cod before the five beer and wine licenses are available.
Okay.
So.
But, but all of this came out of public interest. We didn't generate this.
Right.
It came from the public to us. What can you do for us to expand the number of licenses? And through the investigative process that we undertook, this is what came back to us, and that's what is being presented at town meeting. A town meeting can say yes or no.
Usually as a licensing board, the decision on how many licenses are going to be in town usually is voted by the licensing board. And as a licensing board, I think the voters are going to say, well, they voted for this many licenses in town because they proposed this article. I know if it happened in my town, I would just assume that if you proposed the article. I have seen many questions come to town meeting in Falmouth and Mashpee where proponents put an article on town meeting to expand the number of licenses. It's from a proponent. It's the first time I've ever seen the licensing board members put the article on town meeting to expand the number of package store licenses this extremely.
Yeah, Bob, good.
One question. And you maybe will answer, or Bud, I don't know. I heard that with the more licenses, the town may be eligible for another marijuana facility. Is that true?
I don't know the exact numbers, but I know one additional license became available in Mashpee. And that gave Mashpee a second marijuana license. I don't know the exact quota system for marijuana licenses. But it is determined by the number of liquor licenses somehow.
There's a, there is a twenty percent in terms of package store licenses. But when the town, if you remember, the townspeople voted for no retail marijuana sales. And then we went back and had to revote it once the state law changed. And I believe when we voted at town meeting, it had a restriction for only one license. So I believe that's what was voted at town meeting.
Okay, but will state law supersede that with the licenses?
I'd have, I mean, I'd have to check with town council. I mean, if town restricted.
I just wonder if state law will supersede ours.
That's what happened with the recreational, state law superseding.
Okay.
Dennis Connery from Meeting House Package Store and Sandwich. We all understood when you got these requests and you had problems with the restaurant owners, that there was a problem and you had to address it, which you did. But when you considered the year-round existing package store license, did you ever consider the need of any more of those licenses in town? The town's pretty well served now. And I think you guys should have really considered, even though somebody comes up and requests a license, what, I mean, just going to give them out? You should at least consider, is there a real need for more licenses in the town? And I don't think you guys did that. You just took some, just because somebody requests, they want another license, are you just going to give them out? Without considering the needs of the town? If you already have those needs, why would you issue more? I just think it should be two separate issues. And whether you admit you made a misunderstanding or mistake, we tried to rectify this at town meeting by two separate articles. I mean, did anybody consider that they have enough licenses in town? Or you have too many? Was that subject ever brought up?
It, I, I mean, how, I can say how I approached it. And that was that in neighboring towns, there's unlimited licenses. And that in nineteen eighty-five, when Sandwich voted to cap the licenses. What's that? No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't identify specific towns. I just Mashpee has unlimited licenses. Not in package?
No. Restaurant.
Okay.
Not in what we're talking about. There is no town on Cape Cod, there is no town in Massachusetts. There is one city that has to track its licenses.
Mm-hmm.
This is the first time it's happened.
Right.
These licenses have, you know, everybody who has an existing license actually had to buy a license for the business. Why should these licenses just be given out free? Just because you request one?
They, well.
I just don't think it's right.
They technically, when you guys applied for it, they were free, right? I mean, that's.
No, the, every license has a price to it. They have to pay an annual fee for the license.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about fees, I'm talking about value of license. I just hope we can get something accomplished. It would be nice if the selectmen would take something up now before we go to town meeting. I would hope that they would reconsider what they, they put it together as an article and separate it. And thank you for the time.
Yeah, same here.
Neelash Marpatia from Paradise Wine and Spirits in Route six A in Stop and Stop Plaza. The same thing, like Dennis Connery said, do we have a need for the license in the town? Because we already have the six pool liquor licenses. And like, like we discussed, like no one town in Massachusetts have unlimited package licenses. And this is going to be from six to eleven. And I don't think, not I'm, I want to, I don't want to say I don't think, but I think the Sandwich have a six liquor licenses from long time. And the population for the Sandwich since nineteen eighty has gone up only five thousand since nineteen eighty. So we do need a more five licenses for pool package licensing in a license in a Sandwich now? Like a couple of months ago, Market Basket did ask for the license in a bone, and they denied because there is no need in the town. They already have six or seven pool package store licenses in the town. And there is no need for the new license. And Bond denied the Market Basket, the license. And Market Basket did not get one. So like I just want to say that, like, I don't think the Sandwich does need a new package store license. It's like five. Thank you for the time now.
Mr. Patel, did you apply for one of these licenses, I thought?
I'm sorry?
No, what it was, was the same process was used for your establishment. It might have been before you owned it. But we had to do a vote at town meeting with your specific address for Paradise Liquors. And that was approved through a special act of the legislature, just like what we're trying to do here. It's the same exact situation.
Oh, that I don't know, because I just, since two thousand eighteen, there I did not know anything about the history of that store though.
And just for the folks at home, the population in nineteen eighty in Sandwich was less than ten thousand. The population today is twenty-two thousand.
Right.
So it's twelve thousand more people living here than when the vote was taken at town meeting to limit the licenses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the things that bothers me is, is the explanation. I, I didn't realize that package stores were restricted in the other towns either. But I'm wondering if maybe one of the ideas would be more research on the package store end and go with the restaurant one.
How would that look with tweet?
I mean, the board, if the board instructed me like what your plan was, I can work with town council so the motion would reflect that. And so the main motion, you know, could change depending on what you decided to do.
So we, so I think what we would have to do, and Bud, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but is that we would have to amend or instruct you to amend the Article sixteen with the town council, a motion would have to come from, either from us or from the floor to amend the motion at town meeting.
To exclude package stores from the motion.
I think if, if that's what the board decided to do, the main motion would be rewritten and only address the on-premises licenses. But I think it would be wise to explain to town meeting why the off-premises ones weren't being requested at that time, just that they are being removed if that's what the board decides to do. And, you know, Brian Riley can help us with that, and he'll be there Monday night. But, you know, it's something we should, to bed Monday morning, yeah.
Brian, what class is that on-premise?
Fifteen.
Twelve. It's a section, they call it a section twelve license?
For restaurants.
For restaurants.
Fifteen is the package store.
Let me say the, timeout. There's too much communication going on between the board and the public when we're trying to talk amongst the board and your staff.
We don't, we don't know some of the answers.
There's nowhere in the current motion where it talks about section twelve or section fifteen. Don't confuse things. It says on-premises or off-premises. Town council would say, don't add new language, use what you used in the main motion, in the article. And the motion can be more specific than the, than the article.
So it's really, we'd be telling, we'd be removing the off-premises?
If that's what the board decided, it would be fairly easy to do that, I think.
Any thoughts?
I just think for information purposes, I, I don't know what, what, I trust what they're saying, but I don't know what the rules are as far as like package stores and, and all that. But if, if it's, if they're correct, I think eleven is a lot for Sandwich.
Right.
So I don't know how you deal with that unless we just do more research. If we could separate it and do more research on that part of it and come back.
Try and get something moved through, right.
At the next town meeting, if we feel it, we should just do it or.
Is that, is everybody comfortable with that?
You want to go with the on-premise licenses?
And then we'll do more research with the off? Is that, Pat, is that?
Yeah. I just think trying to explain this town meeting is going to be a hard show. It's, it's just going to be confusing and it's going to be a hard show.
Charlie, what are your thoughts?
I don't think it'll be pretty either way. And, sorry, go ahead.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I agree with Charlie.
Right.
People aren't used to businesses where there are barriers to entry that are so high.
Right.
Right. Should we go with the on-premise licenses for now and use it that?
So my thought is, but that to you guys.
Make a motion.
Well, it, I mean, as a positive thing, it's something that we can always revisit. So it's not, this is not a binding, you know, decision, you know, one way or the other. So if we, you know, whichever way we want to go with it, it's not binding. It's something that we can always bring up at a future town meeting if necessary.
Same way we did with this. At this time. I'd like to see what the public's reaction to it is.
As, you mean as it's?
Yeah.
Right now, as it is? Versus splitting it? Or you mean split it and see what they do with either side?
A split should come from the floor, as I said initially.
Right.
Just getting out of here.
Yeah.
Matthew Spillane, I do not hold a liquor license. I'm just a regular person. I've been sort of following along in the newspaper with the situation of trying to expand restaurant pour licenses. And I'm supportive of that. I think that's, if, there's been a need articulated. I, I did not know, and the blame is on myself, that there was the other half of the equation with the, the all retail license. there was the other half of the equation with the, um, the all retail license. Uh, I do see a substantive difference between the two. I've been reviewing the, um, you know, the statute, the eminating statute. And it says that the, the board responsible for issuing licenses, yourselves, the first thing that they must do is look for a need. So I think it's very charged language that, um, the other speakers have used tonight when they say, where's the need? Where's the need? I think it's a threshold issue. This board has to decide that there's a need before proceeding on those, um, all pour licenses. Uh, selling alcohol is, is considered a pervasively regulated industry. The only other pervasively regulated industries, um, according to the Supreme Court, are firearm sales, um, mining, and automotive junkyards. So there is supposed to be, um, real restraint, I guess I would say, in how the licensing board looks at these issues. So I, I, I do, um, appreciate the board actually possibly taking a step back from, um, the second portion of the, the retail licenses and really looking at it. Because at the end of the day, it is your responsibility. And when you read the, the statute closely, it appears that there's a responsibility of restraint. It's not up to the public to tell, you know, you how to vote. It is up to you to decide whether or not there is a need for additional licenses. So I think a common sense approach might be to just sort of back out if you can do it without prejudice, um, revisit later. But I think you certainly have identified a, a good reason to move forward with the, um, the restaurant licenses. And I'd fully support that. Again, just no real horse in the game here, just trying to add a little bit of, you know, common sense to it. Thank you very much.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I, well, me, I don't think we really need a motion. We just need a advisement, right? Cause the, then the motions got, would.
Out of this motion too, that we take care of the restaurant part of it now.
Right.
Get more information on the other part. And we've got the motion right here and on motion number two, where they wrote it up. Can we go with that?
I think if you just, like, if you just wanted to consider the on-premises ones, then I just need to run the language by town council. My guess is it would be very similar to that. The one that just lists the on-premises licenses. But then I think town council would also advise that someone should explain to town meeting that we're not acting on the off-premises ones that are listed, just so people don't think it's going as it's printed in the warrant.
Now, I'm just gonna throw this out there because I could see this happening. If one of the applicants for the off-premise came back and altered it, made a motion to go back to the original motion, would that be allowed?
I think they would have to rewrite the whole thing because you control the motion because you're the, you're the people who put articles on the warrant, except for petition articles. So the board has a right to make the main motion. And then if they try to amend it, it probably could get, uh, messy.
Just in the history of things coming back, you know, if, if one of the, you know, petitioners stood up and just read this whole, you know, what we had printed already on the warrant, I just don't know how that would hap, you know, what would happen at that point. That would really be a town council thing at the meeting, correct? Okay.
And I think Shane, if we do this, that if you're gonna do the explaining or whatever, we've learned a lot since we, since we've done this. Uh, we, we were always in a position where we didn't have enough licenses for, for.
Correct.
So, and trying to accomplish a better end for everybody.
Right.
We didn't, one of the things, I don't think we, we didn't do a policy of evaluating the, the need, which is what Javala talked about, because we never had to do that.
Right.
And, uh, I think if nothing else, if we go with the, just with the restaurant part of it, we should follow up with coming up with a policy exactly of what they're talking about. A specific policy over how we're gonna issue licenses. We've talked about this anyway. It's not new. But we've never had the opportunity because we never had, we never had a surplus of licenses, so.
There was one in, one out. You know, there was not, there was one applicant, we had one license come in, one applicant, license went back out. You know, pretty mundane.
And I, and I have to say that, you know, that we've been set with these number of licenses since nineteen eighty-five. So in all fairness, you know, we're not talking about eleven, but we, there might be a possibility for a later date to add some, you know? If we come up with a policy of how we're gonna decide that. So. I think that explanation should, should go into the explanation to the, to the town meeting that we had learned a lot since this motion was written and we're concerned about some of it. We wanna do more diligence on it.
Still like to get the reaction of council to all of this discussion.
They're gonna have to, anyway. No matter what we vote.
Well, we don't have a town, we don't have a meeting between now and town meeting, so we'd have to. I guess the question before us is, is do we scrap the whole, really? We'd either have to scrap all of sixteen in order to hear back from town council, or we proceed forward. From what I'm hearing, the majority of us say is to proceed forward on the restaurant side of the license and then hold back on the off-premise license.
I'm, I'll make a motion.
Well, I don't, hold, before we do that, Bud, is there? Charlie, do you have?
I've been concerned about that. I think it's unfair.
To, to split it prior versus what we have?
Yeah. If you didn't feel comfortable with the whole article, you could indefinitely postpone it. We could do research and bring it back to a special in the fall if we have one. We usually have one in November. It's not required, but.
That might be a better.
Town meeting just got a half hour shorter if that's what you decide to do.
Well, it's no, it's no ru, I mean, the process is, is long anyway, even if you're, you're talking on legislature, so.
It's a year process, it's a year, right between when we do.
But what are we gonna be sitting here five months hence? And we're gonna have a restaurant owner in here saying, hey, I wanna have a successful restaurant. I wanna pour. So, the way I look at this is if we can fix that part of it, the on-premises.
Move something forward.
Then we should.
Right.
Because these gentlemen are only gonna get up at town meeting and say, thank you to the board for reacting so quickly to our complaint. Why, it's only been seventy-two hours since we raised this complaint. And they already activated town council, rewrote the motion so that it did what you asked us yesterday. And so I don't see this as an issue at town meeting because now we have their backing. They're gonna get up and support what the selectmen are doing. Because they've already told us they're in favor of the restaurant fix.
Right.
But they don't want us to mess with the package stores. So it's not, it shouldn't be an issue.
Right.
Am I correct in that, or? Because, I mean, we don't wanna set up a brawl at town meeting, spend hours talking back and forth with you telling the board how bad, telling town meeting how bad we are because we made a mistake. We're willing to, we have already been willing to and are willing to, so.
I think the first thing we said was, whatever we do, we don't wanna stand in the way of the restaurants.
Yeah.
They have a need.
I, I, I get that, Brian, and we do too.
And by dividing it, my next question was, are you going to give a positive or a negative motion after you divided it? Originally at the meeting yesterday, I said, could you eliminate the Section fifteen licenses?
Yeah.
And move it with just the Section twelve licenses? And the reason for that would be further study. And I think that's the easiest solution. And we're behind you, but many of us can't speak at town meeting when our residents with tax payers.
No, I agree. I, I understand.
We'll be there.
But that's what I would suggest.
Yeah.
Accomplish something.
Right.
We've learned something. Then we can initiate the need process for a future town meeting.
I think that's all, I, yep.
So Pat, do you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, the only question, the only thing that we didn't resolve, which Brian raised, was how as a board, we're going to approach supporting, so we're, we'll, we'll agree that as a board, we're going to support the on-premise consumption. But if the town meeting goes the other way and they support the package stores, then we'll go against that.
Well, it won't be there.
We will.
No, we won't, we'll just be voters.
It won't be on there.
It won't be on there. That's a wild.
So that's.
So I, alright, so we're gonna rewrite the motion so that the motion doesn't include the split. Okay, sorry.
Basically, motion number two.
Staying up too late.
It's written.
And I guess, in all seriousness, Charlie was saying about town council, if town council has a problem, then I think our only thing to do then is to scrap it.
Yeah. He's already wrote it up, so pretty much, yeah. Motion number two.
So we'll leave it as Bud and town council can take care of that.
That's a motion, right?
Is that my motion? I would, I'll just move that we would direct the town manager to work with town council to rewrite the motion for Article sixteen for the annual town meeting so that the article includes and references only on-premises alcohol liquor licenses.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four, one. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, do we have anything else on town meeting, Bud, or is that?
Uh, that's it.
Okay. Uh, the next item is a removal of condominium association for sixteen Jan Sebastian Drive sale.
Yeah, so, um, this is one that when we found out about, we sort of panicked and, um, I just wanna acknowledge right in the beginning, Vicky Marsh, like, came to the rescue and did a bunch of research and put our fears to bed. So when she was doing the title search to make sure everything was good to go for the sale of sixteen Jan Sebastian, um, there was an old condominium association that was tied to the building. And so when the town purchased the property from Cape Cod Bank and Trust for, I think, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, the, uh, condo association was not referred to in the deed, but it, it hasn't really been invalidated or withdrawn. So what Vicky suggested, and I think I left it in front of your chairs just before the meeting tonight, um, is the actual motion that she'd prefer or ask you to adopt. And then there's a one-page document that I think several of you signed and that Shane can sign. And then once that's all signed, we're gonna record it at the registry before we do the auction. And it will invalidate and withdraw the condo association. So it won't exist anymore before we sell the property.
And that's a big plus for the sale.
It is, I think, just 'cause.
Cleans it, cleans up the title on it, basically, so.
Alright, we good?
Ready to go.
Moved that the select board approve and execute the removal from condominium pursuant to general law, Chapter one eighty-three A, Section nineteen of the Cedar Crest condominium located at Jan Sebastian Drive, and authorize the chair to execute the removal on behalf of the board.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairman?
Thank you very much on that one.
Anybody? Seeing none, we'll move on to the select board meeting schedule?
I just, I just took a stab because it's getting to be that time of year and our, our, our current, um, meeting schedule, I think, was gonna expire at the end of June. I just tried to carry it through December and then I just sort of got on a roll to try to talk about when we do the budget presentation for next January, even though we haven't voted a budget for the upcoming year, but, um, this is just a draft, so what I, I guess probably the main thing that you should maybe think about is any time there was a week with a bigger holiday, i.e. Fourth of July, Labor Day, I tried to skip that week, no matter when the date felt and fell. So I think what you see, there, there's a couple times when we'll have no meeting two weeks in a row, but we're still averaging at least two meetings a month, so.
That's in the chat still, right?
It is, yeah. And then I just tried to guess if we had to have a special, when it would make sense. And we always try to go, avoid Veterans Day and avoid the week of Thanksgiving, so. I just put that there just as a placeholder. And again, it's not set in stone, but if people wanna let us know, we can update it.
Everybody good? Uh, other matters not reasonably anticipated or new business? Anybody? Seeing none?
I just, just, you know, I've heard some public comment. Uh, I'm sure that the, uh, management of, of the town is aware that, um, uh, there's been a level of disappointment that there, that you can't wave yourself in or, uh, push a handicap button to enter, uh, the municipal offices.
Yeah, no, that's, um, being addressed. Um, I think some company that provides those type of services was meeting with Brian Schlegel, uh, this week, as long as they didn't blow off the appointment, so that's going in. Don't know how fast, but it's gonna go in.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for investigating that.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
No, that's a good thing, and that's.
Yeah.
Glad that that was brought up, that's important. Anybody else? There is. Would you like to speak at the final public comment?
I just have a quick handout. My name's Drew McManus with the Cape Cod Disc Golf Club.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna pass this out to you all. This is a, uh.
Thank you, Drew.
Has statistics of course use ever since the coast course at Oak Crest Cove was created. So I felt that this would be good information for you guys to see and to express on behalf of the Disc Golf Club and everybody who uses the course, how much we appreciate your approving this. And, um, that's all I really wanted to say.
How are you doing? Are you done?
Almost done. We have to put in T-signs and a couple more T-pads, and then it'll be done. And it would be great to have like an opening ceremony. Um, so within the next, hopefully, by the fall, I think we'll have everything done and ready to go.
Very cool.
Has anybody been up playing?
Yeah.
Yeah, look at the numbers.
It's all in that report.
I saw some.
That only involves people who use that app, so it doesn't represent the full scope of people who play the course, so.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
Guy said he did nine holes, it was pretty good.
Yeah. It's a workout. But I just wanted to, uh, say how much we appreciate, uh, the approval and how well the course has turned out and everybody's enjoying it, so.
So now, what are you gonna plan to do when it's all done? You gonna hold tournaments or?
Yes, we actually, we've had tournaments already. We do weekly leagues and so, yeah, we've had a few tournaments and we can plan to continue to have tournaments and uh, try to, you know, expand, um, disc golf to the public and try to introduce people to the sport and, um, so far, so good, so.
And how are you guys tracking the, um, the users? Is it?
That's really the best way is the UDisc app. It's very popular amongst disc golfers. Um, most people that I know use the app and it keeps course statistics use. Uh, you can even, uh, use it to help determine if the par for a given hole is the right par based on, uh, average score. So it's a really handy, um, information app for disc golf.
Well, it's great.
Really great to have you come and report on this.
Yeah.
Really, it's really important.
I'm gonna do the same thing for the Community Preservation Act Committee too, just to give them an update as well. Um, so everybody can see the progress we've made, so.
The packing lot's big enough and all that, done, done, yeah?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And the rec department, uh, bought purchase kits, so if anyone's interested in going to play, doesn't have their own equipment, just call the rec department and they'll let you borrow it for however long it takes, so.
The frisbee that's got the magnet in it?
Yeah.
Within four feet, you're all set.
It's, it's, the, the, the frisbees are way different than the one you use on the beach, as I said.
Yeah, it's nothing like that.
Yeah, different though, right? They are special.
They're specially made for the sport, yeah, very different from your typical Wham-O frisbee, so.
And it's, and it's, and the funny, it's funny because one of our, uh, one of the people that we know plays it a lot. And like, how they have, it's almost like a golfer's bag. It has different discs for different distances and all this stuff. It's, it's really wild.
Cool.
So that's it. Um, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you. Thank you for the update.
And just for the people at home, there was, um, so that if they don't see this, that so far there was over almost two thousand rounds of, uh, disc golf were played. Um, they have a list of active, the most active golfers, almost three thousand. They have a list of active, the most active golfers. Almost three thousand hours were spent on the course. Um, and the furthest player that played on the course came from Australia.
Are you going to come up with a name?
I like that stat.
You got a name for it yet? Or we're just calling it Disc Golf?
Oh, it's just going to be Oak Crest Cove Disc Golf Course. That's, that's the name, so. Alright, thanks again. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Closing remarks. Anybody have anything this evening?
Well, just the obvious ones, a town meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
Everybody is encouraged to attend. Town election on Thursday. Everybody is encouraged to perform your civic duty. The, it's all about community. And while we continue to maintain the situation in Eastern Europe and the overall threat to our peace in our thoughts and prayers, please.
And I just want to add to that, that in, in light of the spirited conversation that we had here, you know, that I personally, I, I think that we all are, are working hard to, you know, do things better for the public. It's, you know, it's a lot of time that we spent on these, you know, the warrant articles for town. You know, all the town employees, especially Bud, Heather. Poor Melissa's learned more about alcohol licenses in the last year than I think, you know, anybody would care to. But that, you know, these things that we're doing in, you know, the warrant articles that are on at town meeting, you know, it, this is the business of the town. This is where your taxes go. This is your voice to be heard. So when you come to town meeting, you have your placard, you know, that, you know, you are making the decisions. We just, you know, we're merely suggesting what's on there for everybody to vote on. But that this is, you know, for your voice to be heard, just like tonight, you know, voices were heard and we respected that and answered back, so. I know it's not easy and, you know, we don't always, always agree, but you know, we work hard to make things better for everybody in town and that's, you know, what we really do. And that's what's on that warrant article for town meeting and it's a good thing, so.
Well said.
Thank you.
Indeed, yes.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn the meeting of the select board for April twenty-seventh.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Our next meeting is for everybody in town to attend, which is town meeting. It's just seven PM on Monday, May first at the Sandwich Town High School. And then our, the following on Thursday is on the fourth, is the annual town elections. And the following Thursday, we have another meeting back here at seven PM. Thank you very much.